Good evening, everyone. Thank you for coming out to the student recognition ceremony for the Freehold Regional High School District. We're pleased to have the Freehold Regional High School Naval Junior ROTC Academy here tonight to present our nation's colors under the leadership of Major Gregory Penzac. We would ask you to please rise and please remain standing until the colors are clear.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic and liberty which stands before us, the nation under God, indivisible, and the religion that is in us. And a ring, count, ready, come. Right wheel, march. Pursuant to the over, Public Penix Act, Chapter 231, under clause 1975, the meeting has been duly advertised as per press issue of August 1st, 2015, November 30th, 2015. While the municipal council of townships and boroughs of the Southern Regional High School District have a new, new, new requirements to post in the notice sheet. Do we have a motion for a minutes?
Thank you, second. Kathy, thank you.
Discussion, Saint Dunne, Mr. Boyce.
Yes.
Mr. Destico?
Yes.
Mr. Robles?
Yes.
Mr. Corolla?
Yes.
Mr. Assitoli?
Yes.
Okay, next up, indications are on file. Board Office Superintendent.
Alright, so we are going to open up with the student recognition ceremony.
Good evening, everyone. On behalf of the administration of Freehold High School, certainly probably the first of many congratulations that you will hear tonight. Congratulations to all the recipients of one of the Board of Education medals for a variety of reasons you've been invited to come tonight. I know that you must be very proud, but in addition, so are your parents because they have been probably your greatest champion, whether it's academics, or athletics, or volunteerism, or whatever brings you here tonight. Certainly, congratulations are in order to you, the parents, as much as congratulations are in order to your son or daughter. We're going to do something a little bit different this evening. I will be giving the descriptor for many of the awards that are shared by students in all six of the high schools. So tonight, when you hear the descriptor, when the next administrator comes to the podium, he or she will just give the names of the student and the reason for the recognition, but I will provide the background. This evening, I will begin with recognition for the National Merit Scholarship Program. This program honors individual students who show exceptional academic ability and potential for success in rigorous college studies. The National Merit Scholarship Corporation is a nonprofit organization that operates without government assistance. It was established in 1955 specifically to conduct the annual National Merit Scholarship Program. Scholarships are underwritten by this corporation with its own funds and approximately 440 business organizations as well as institutions of higher education. All share the goals of honoring the best of our nation's students and encouraging the pursuit of academic excellence. In October of 2014, more than 1.5 million students across this country entered the 2016 competition by virtue of taking the 2014 preliminary SAT, more commonly known as the PSATs. It also is the National Merit Scholarship Qualifying Test. Of these students, approximately 34,000, so 1.5 million narrowed down to 34,000, or the top 5% of all of those who took the test are recognized as National Merit Committed Students. These young men and women have demonstrated outstanding potential for academic success. And although the commended students will not continue in the 2016 competition for National Merit Scholarship Awards, they represent certainly a valuable national resource, certainly a source of pride for the Freehold Regional High School District, and an achievement that will be recognized this evening. When I call your name, I ask those students from Freehold High School who are being recognized as National Merit Commended Students, please come forward. Shabon Jivat, Gabriella Brick, Jenny Cowan, Brandon Cohen, Jack Davis, Brian Dillenardis, Veda Gadiraju, Shelby Jane, Ashley Latona, Sai Mohan, Anjali Prabhat, Sareetek Shah, Yash Shah, Michael Consegüero, Sharu Vaez, Alexis Hui. Moving forward in the competition for National Merit Scholarship Awards are those designated as National Merit Semi-Finalists. Nationwide, there are only remaining 16,000 students out of 1.5 million who are designated as semi-finalists. These very talented high school seniors have an opportunity to continue in the competition for approximately 7,400 National Merit Scholarships that will be worth more than $32 million, and these scholarships will be often awarded this spring. About 90% of the semi-finalists are expected to attain finalist standing, with about half winning a National Merit Scholarship and earning the prestigious title of Merit Scholar. From Freehold High School, the National Merit Semi-Finalist, Victoria Loon, Shaden Nadezwaran, I did just realize that I came up to the podium and I did not introduce myself. Those of you who are from Freehold High School probably figured it out. I'm Wendy Juulow. I'm principal of Freehold High School, and to my left is Jason Longo, who is the supervisor of extracurricular activities at Freehold High School. Moving forward in acknowledging academic excellence is one of our students with a perfect SAT score. Yeah, you can sigh because I did when I saw it. She is a senior at Freehold High School. She scored a perfect 2,400 on her SAT.[732.56][732.56](applause) Which means 800 in reading, 800 in math, 800 in writing. I ask Anjali Prabhat to come forward, please.[748.23][748.23](applause) Anjali is a student in our Medical Science Learning Center. Anjali will be pursuing a career in medicine. She anticipates a specialty in surgery, although she is undecided yet what specific area of Many students in the Freehold Regional High School District understand, and many of his parents know this, the importance of community service, and this spirit of volunteerism takes many forms. One forum is through scouting. For young women, the equivalent of earning the distinction of Eagle Scout is the Gold Award. For more than 100 years, Girl Scouting has honored girls who made a substantial impact in their communities with the Gold Award, which is the highest achievement awarded by the Girl Scouts of America. Only approximately 5% of all girls who start out in scouting will earn this honor. To earn this achievement, each girl working alone must commit a minimum of 80 hours of work in planning and the execution of a community service project. This project will also be completed with the help of troop members and others from the community, but the full ownership of the project is that young woman and hers alone. All projects are under the careful scrutiny of the Girl Scout Jersey Shore Council to ensure that the young woman has demonstrated leadership and commitment to the project that she set out to accomplish. From Freehold High School, we have two students who have earned the Gold Award. Rachel Beck, I ask Rachel to come forward, please.[879.23][879.23](applause) Rachel's project was called "Go Purple: Epilepsy Awareness." She focused on increasing people's awareness of this disorder by creating a PowerPoint, presentation, pamphlets, posters, and video. In addition, she hosted a booth at various community events sponsored by the Epilepsy Foundation of New Jersey, including Walk, Blow, Run, which was a 5K, Paint the Pony Purple, and Walk for a Brighter Tomorrow. Our second Gold Award recipient is Ela Sepeh. Ela's project addressed the issue of lack of awareness about asthma and asthma management in elementary school children, in spite of the fact that 6.8 million children in this country have asthma. To help raise awareness, Ela taught elementary school children in one-hour sessions about what asthma is, how to reduce the triggers, and how to better manage the condition. She also created videos, which she posted on a website, to help promote sustainment beyond her involvement. The next students that we will recognize are those who have been invited to the All Shore Chorus. All Shore Chorus is a group of approximately 150 high school students from the Monmouth and Ocean County areas that go through a very rigorous audition process that includes a prepared solo, sight reading, and tonal memory. These accepted students will participate in a month of rehearsals, which this year will culminate in the All Shore Chorus Concert, Saturday, February 6, 7 o'clock, at Red Bank Regional High School. From Freehold High School, Claudia Gruber and Ethan Greaver.[1032.01][1032.01](applause) Ethan couldn't be here this night. His mom emailed Mr. Longo to say that he actually had singing lessons that he couldn't get out of, so that's pretty bad. I'm going to turn the podium over now to Mr. Longo.
First, I'd like to congratulate all of the medal recipients that will be honored this evening. They're being honored for some outstanding accomplishments in academics, activities, and athletics. I would like to thank the Board of Education and our superintendent for providing our students with such tremendous opportunities here in the regional high school district. First, we'd like to recognize our girls varsity soccer team. We had a bit of a roller coaster year in terms of wins and losses, however, this team was dead on with one thing all year long. There was one constant that was always prevalent during their games. They played the game the way you asked the game to be played, the way Freehold Regional High School District expects our athletes to play the game, the way I know their coach demands that they play the game. They played this game with a very high level of sportsmanship. The shore soccer officials at their banquet, they vote on one girls' team, one boys' team from Monmouth County and Ocean County to receive their annual sportsmanship award. This year's recipient was chosen by the men and women who officiate the games, interact with the coaches, and the players during the course of the game. This year's recipient of the Monmouth County Sportsmanship Award was the Freehold High School Girls Soccer Team.[1149.58][1149.58](applause) Accepting medals on behalf of the entire team are Coach Elise Ingwe, captains Ashley
Congratulations, ladies.
We now like to honor, excuse me, we now like to honor our first-team All Shore athletes. These athletes are nominated by their coaches and coaches from around the conferences. It is selected by a group of members of the press that cover their respective sports. Freehold High School has three All Shore first-team athletes we would like to recognize this evening. Our first athlete is a four-year varsity letter winner. She will play Division One Field Hockey at Boston College, Caitlin Pianco.[1241.23][1241.23](applause) Our next athlete is also a four-year varsity letter winner. She will play Division One Field Hockey at Wake Forest University, Jessica Pianco.[1258.65][1258.65](applause) And our last first-team All Shore athlete, who's currently mulling over several opportunities to continue his college football career, Jake Curry.[1276.42][1276.42](applause) I'd like to call football coach Dave Ellis up to the podium to present the sentence.[1296.23][1296.23](applause) Congratulations, guys. Alright, this last award we will recognize is an award given by the Maxwell Football Club, known as the Mini-Max Award. The club was founded in 1935. They're dedicated to the concept that young people are the potential of this nation. The Maxwell Football Club wants to help young people realize that potential as leaders now and as future leaders of this country. Throughout the season, coaches send in nominations for a player based on the following criteria: football performance, academics, and community service. Only 51 high school football players in the state of New Jersey are chosen for this award. One of the Mini-Max Award winners will be eventually named New Jersey Player of the Year and compete further against the Pennsylvania Player of the Year to be named Northeast Regional Player of the Year, eventually receiving an award with other players from the NFL and from college football as well. Not only is our recipient an outstanding football player, but an outstanding young man as well. It's, I just, I'm going off the script here real quick. I met this young man not even a year ago. I've only been here about six months, and his name is mentioned more in my house by my children than I hear his name mentioned in our school. And that's just a testament to the type of young man that he is because my, my boys that seen him, that have seen him play football, have interacted with him, that's all they talk about. And my son is a sophomore in high school, and he looks up to Jake. My little guy, that's all he talks about, Jake Curry, Jake Curry, and it's great because I hope one day they can grow up to be a fine young man just like him. Our Mini-Max Award recipient, Jake Curry.[1416.33][1416.33](applause) Way to go, Jake![1433.11][1433.11](applause) Once again, on behalf of Freehold High School, I would like to congratulate all the medal recipients. Thank you very much. Have a safe and happy holidays.[1442.65][1442.65](applause)
So during the course of the next award's recognition, we will have a couple larger teams. So what we'll ask each of those teams to do is just to come to the center here so that you can be recognized as a team first for photo opportunities and such. So if you're being recognized as part of the team, you're going to congregate into the center there between those two tables. So I'd like to call up Mrs. Higley, Principal of Freehold Township High School.[1474.26][1474.26](applause)
Again, I'd like to thank the Board of Education, Mr. Sampson, for the opportunity to honor our students. To say that this has been a banner of fall for your township high school, if you put it mildly, we have had outstanding success academically, on choir, and also absolutely with our sports teams. It's been a great fall. The first students that I would like to recognize are National Merit Commended Students. So if three of them will come up, Sarah Chaudry, James Bezula, and Katie Shum.[1529.73][1529.73](applause) The next award is an Eagle Scout. The fact that a boy's an Eagle Scout is always carried with it a special significance, not only in scouting, but also as he enters higher education, business, or industry. The award is a performance-based achievement whose standards have been well maintained over the years. Not every boy who joins a Boy Scout team earns the Eagle Scout rank. Only about 5% of all Boy Scouts earn this award. Nevertheless, the goal of scouting, citizenship training, character development, and personal fitness remain important for all Scouts, whether or not they attain the Eagle Scout rank. To earn Eagle Scout rank, a Boy Scout must fulfill requirements in areas of leadership, service, and outdoor skills. A number of specific skills are required to advance through the ranks. To advance, a Boy Scout must pass specific tests that are organized by requirements and merit badges. Merit badges signify the mastery of certain outdoor skills as well as helping boys increase their skill in an area of personal interest. Of the 130-plus merit badges available, a total of 21 must be earned to qualify for Eagle Scout, with 13 badges specifically required. While a lay scout, a scout must plan and develop a service project to benefit any religious institution, school, or community. As a demonstration of leadership, the scout must plan the work, organize the personnel leading, and direct the project to its completion. Our Eagle Scout is Junior Connor Crafton Temple.[1664.33][1664.33](applause) Connor's Eagle Scout project was with St. Peter's Drift Shop, an important part of St. Peter's Episcopal Church and a valuable community resource that has been undergoing a slow renovation. To assist with this, he proposed to renovate and reorganize the house where is room of the shop and overstuff 900 square foot retail space in need of repair, repainting, and reorganization. The specifics include, but aren't limited to, removal, sorting, and inventorying of existing items and display furniture, preparation and repair of the wall surfaces in advance of painting, supply and install new flexible or adjustable shelving, add new display fixtures for merchandise on existing surfaces, painting the walls, restoring merchandise to display fixtures and new shelving. The St. Peter's Drift Shop is a valuable source of income for the church, generating approximately $10,000 to $12,000 monthly, which is used for church operations and community programs. However, the room was in desperate need of refurbishment and reorganization. By repainting, refurbishing, reorganizing, he was able to benefit customers who already use the Drift Shop and have a pleasant experience and help them be able to find what they were looking for. We'd like to thank Connor for his excellent job in this community.[1757.23][1757.23](applause) We also have a Gold Award, Mary Purcell.[1768.83][1768.83](applause) Mary developed a debate team in St. Rose of Lima Elementary School. She coached the team for six months and entered them in the English Speaking Union Debate League. Her goal was to address the issue of confidence among students and help them overcome their fear of public speaking. The team now continues The team now continues, even after a project is over, to thrive and participate in the Garden State Debate League. Congratulations. Is Mrs. Connors here? We also have many students who made all-shore chorus, and Mrs. Connors is going to name those 11 students who made the all-shore chorus.
So the Freehold Township Music Department would like to congratulate the following students that were chosen in November as a participant in the 2015-2016 All-Shore Mixed Chorus. Out of the hundreds who auditioned from the surrounding shore counties, it is an honor to be one of the select few chosen. This year, 11 students will be representing Freehold Township. Congratulations to the following singers: Emily Schultz, Sandy Skorba, Leah Waldron, Victoria Johnson, Maggie Gorilka, Matthew Cirillo, Joseph Santaturo, Lexi Santaturo, Alyssa Bonito, Riley Martin, and Sydney Vargas.
Now we'll be introducing Mr. McAvoy. As I said before, Freehold Township had an amazing fall. We had three teams win Group Four sectional titles, state titles. And we had our girls soccer team win the state championship, co-state championship.
All right, congrats to everyone. And congrats to everyone that will be coming up soon as well from the other schools. Like Mrs. Higley said, we did have an extremely successful fall season. I've been in this school now, I'm in year 15, and I hadn't seen this much, I want to say, success and experience that we had this school year. So first, I'm going to start off with the Mini-Max Award that Mr. Longo first said regarding football. All right, and this has to deal with the criteria of football performance, academics, and community service. For the first time, Freehold Township received one, and his name is Nick Galanti. All right, congrats, Nick. All right, is Kira Roche, is Kira here tonight? All right, first up, I'm going to call up Coach Todd Briggs for our boys' soccer team. Thank you very much. First of all, thank you to the board, Mr. Sampson, Mrs. Higley, for inviting me here tonight to, and Mr. McAvoy, for inviting me here tonight to read the names from our soccer roster, from our Freehold Township High School 2015 Central Jersey Group Four State Sectional Champions. They are as follows: Mike Christina, Jake Koenig, Mark Cassano, Andrew Devella, Kyle Traynor, Jake Kennis. Might as well all-star walk in. That's coaching right there. Sean O'Donnell, Mike Maltese, Adam Colleen, Anthony Badalov, Anthony Orico, Nick Fasendo, Chris Orico, Chris Anello, Ryan Morrison, Chris Cardase, Kyle Finn, Kevin Finn, Chris Hoskins, Matt Nastarovich, Adi Rowf, Matt Nidim, Chris Kulik, Adrian Barajas, Josh Nastarovich, and Tyler Scholman. Thank you again. Coach Briggs, you can join your team. So the boys this year, we were the public A-North championship during the regular season. We went to events, to the quarterfinals in the short conference tournament before being eliminated. We won the Central Jersey Group Four State Sectional Championship, winning the last three games on the road in that tournament while beating the three top 20 teams in the state rankings. We lost only to the eventual Group Four State Champions, Washington Township, in the group semifinal rounds. Finished this season ranked number 10 in the entire state by NJ.com. For us, a big thank you to Coach Briggs, to Mel, to Tepadino, and to these athletes and their parents. Congrats again. Step up, we have Mike Maltese, step up for a second, Mike Christina, and Chris Hoskins, first-team all-shore. Congrats. Thank you very much. All right, I'm now going to call up our field hockey coach, Ms. Karen Gardner. Ms. Gardner was asking you to introduce your team, so if you could come up here, please, all right?
Okay, I'd just like to thank the board, and Mrs. Higley, and Mr. McAvoy for honoring us tonight. So girls, as I call your names, just come on. Elena Andrea, Jessica Applegate, Renata Bauti, Darlene Benjamin, Reagan Dunn, Kelly Hennessy, Madison Hoskins, Mia Lombardi, Rosie Macquarie, Sarah O'Malley, Samantha Perskin, Kaylee Perman, Jess Petricottella, Marie Petricottella, Brittany Thomashevitz, Haley Verga, Callie Williams, Emily Zuccarelli, Samara Mala, and Madison Stein.
Yeah, it's been a great season for a lot of the sports, field hockey, though I think in my year five, I'm going to say, I think I finally understand this sport. I'm still learning every time I go out there. But they had a great season this year. They ended their season with a record of 14-6-1. After starting the season up 2-3, they went on a great run, winning their next 12 out of 15 games. They made it to the semifinals of the short conference tournament for the second year in a row, before losing a tough battle against Shore Regional High School. The girls then went on to win the Central Jersey Group Four Sectional Championship for the second year in a row. The team finished the season ranked number five in the short conference, according to NJ.com. So congrats to the team, thank you to their parents, and thank you to Coach Gardner, Eluzi, and Cassino, and the coaches. So thanks very much. All right, and now I'm going to invite Coach Dave Patterson from our girls soccer team.
Thank you again to the board and to the administration of Freehold Township High School. I'm going to go ahead and read the girls varsity soccer team. I'll say a start coming up. Ange Dacico, Caleb Chadzuko, Amanda Meister, Laura Noesworthy, Hannah Traynor, Hallie Tanner, Kristen Romano, Teresa Sanzon, Megan Latona, Megan Scholman, Victoria Pilka, Kirsten Rizkowski, Alyssa Rizkowski, Lacey Powell, Jada Colbert, Jasmine Colbert, Grantia Cucinelli, Emily Moore, Megan Simonti, Kayla West, Callie Farrell, Paige Farrell, Nicole Whitley, Nicole Sasso, Olivia Schwartz, Lexi Fritz, and our manager extraordinaire, Jimmy Bezulo.
All right, before we go off into the season, first off, I would like to congratulate Coach Dave Patterson. He was named the Star Ledger Girl Soccer Coach of the Year. From our end, it is impressive to watch a very calm and inspire this team with enthusiasm. He knows the sport, he knows the plays, and can inspire all coaches and players in any sport. He is to be commended for his dedication. As an exceptional math teacher, he calculates and thinks about every plan minute by the minute, and he does that in soccer as well. He was obviously a former Teacher of the Year, and now he is a new Coach of the Year. So congrats to Mr. Patterson. As for the girls team, we started number two seed in the short conference tournament. The girls marched to the final after outscoring opponents 8-0. Unfortunately, we suffered a 1-0 defeat to Poltneck in the finals. Two days later, the girls rebounded in the state tournament where we earned the number one seed. The girls won five straight games in the state tournament, outscoring opponents 17-2, to win the program's first sectional title and sharing the group title with Ridge. The sectional championship was a game for the ages, where the girls came back from a 2-0 deficit to tie the game with five minutes left and to get the game winner with just 47, oh, excuse me, 48 seconds left. Overall, the girls finished the season 20-40th and 2, and were ranked number two in the short conference, number four in the state, number 14 in the region, and number 50 in the country. So thank you to Coach Patterson, Coach Ada, and Mr. Bitburg, as well as all of your parents and fans as well. So thank you very much. As a kind of, I would like some more. I would just like to, Kaylee Farrell, if you could step up. Kaylee, step up for a second. Kaylee was named first-team all-shore, and she will be attending University of New Hampshire. Lacey Powell, stand up. Lacey Powell, she is first-team all-shore, is going to Temple. And Nicole Whitley, where are you, Nicole? Nicole is going to Rutgers, first-team all-state, first-team all-group four, first-team all-shore. And lately, or last weekend, 40 of the nation's elite girls high school soccer players took part in the third annual All-American Game in North Carolina. Nicole just competed on December 5th with 40 girls chosen. Thank you for having her on, and thank you for a great season.
Thank you, Mr. McAvoy. We'd now like to call up the administrator from Marlborough High School.
Good evening. My name is Scott Lipson, I'm the Assistant Coach of Marlborough High School, and this is Mr. Ryden, our Supervisor of Extracurricular Activities. On behalf of the Marlborough High School Administrative Team, we want to congratulate the parents and family members of all of tonight's recipients, as well as the students themselves. We wish a safe and happy holiday season to all of them. At this time, we will recognize the National Merit Commended Students. Neha Ugerball, Gabrielle Gabriel Harvish, Ian Baum, Jessica Edgert, Orin Chatterjee, Evelyn Choi, Dean Ew, Andy Gao, Maggie Jones, Philip Lu, Tyler Merzer, Harry Miller, Bachi Mohapatra, Nancy Candia, Jacob Parrish, Amalay Potterton, Rhea Rich Singhani, Katie Sun, Heather Corbin, Andrew Toran, Patrick Jung, Alicia Jung, and Rachel Jung.
Good evening, my name is Dave Ryden, I'm the Supervisor of Extracurricular Activities. A couple other people that we'd like to recognize are Andrew Toran, you might as well come back down. Andrew was recognized as, with the National Hispanic Recognition Program. And Rachel Zau. Rachel scored a perfect score on her SATs. Thank you very much. At Marlborough, we also had two Eagle Scouts. The first one is Charles Plasek. I'm not sure if Charles is here. To read a little bit about Charles, as Charles went to his local church, St. Robert's of Bellamy, where the prayer garden was in need of renovation, he started by removing a large pond in the center of the prayer garden and built a self-recycling water fountain. The project took multiple weekends and a lot of hard work, and he and his volunteers as well a lot of fundraising. So I'll accept his award on his behalf. The next one is Andrew Gao. Andrew, so we see two Eagle Scouts. After visiting the YMCA Community Center in the Freehold Borough and seeing the deteriorating conditions of the computers, Andy became a man on a mission. Over the next six months, he created several fundraising projects, including a scrap metal collection and a clothing drive. And after fundraising a total of $3,600, he bought brand-new computer parts and gathered a group of volunteers. He taught the volunteers how to build the computers through a PowerPoint presentation. And on December 23rd, 2014, he delivered the computers and renovated the computer lab with the new computers. And we also had three girls that received their gold awards. The first one is Raina Hury. Raina's inspiration for her project came from President Obama's Educate to Innovate campaign, which was designed to encourage and motivate children to excel in science. She created a sustainable science program for the children at the Montessori summer camp. She worked on different hands-on and creative experiments with them throughout the summer. The children had the opportunity to perform their favorite science experiments at a science fair. The project helped them understand how science can be applied to their everyday lives. The curriculum was shared with several local organizations, some of which did not have the necessary resources to develop such a program. Our next gold award winner was Ayushi. Our next gold award winner was Ayushi. She created a circuit board, operated a board game for kids to play at fairs. The boards were curated for the Rutgers 4-H Society, so their volunteers were better able to care for the animals and answer important questions during the 4-H game. And our last gold award winner is Jessica Campisi. For her gold award project, Jessica created a special arts and crafts area for the Ron McDonald House in Long Branch. Jessica created the Arts and Crafts Center in hopes of giving the children and their families staying there a chance to not only escape from the reality of their situation, but also a chance to express their artistic and creative abilities. And Marlboro also competed this year at the JSA Fall State Convention, and we had several students that were... It's a... The JSA debates different topics, and we had a couple of students that received Best Speaker. The first one is Matt Jones. Matt, City Concession. How can the international community migrate through refugee crisis? Next is Sarah Baum. Sarah resolved that unintentional discrimination should still be subject to discrimination law. Also, she also debated, resolved that business owners have the right to deny service to people on the basis of race, sexual orientation, and gender. Next is Arju Sinan. He was a crossfire, resolved that the American dream is no longer attainable. And Ambiku Sinan. Society through the eyes of Lindsey Graham and Rand Paul resolved that the United States should continue arming moderate rebel factions in Syria. And I'd like to call Grace Cunningham down. Grace is a four-year leather winner on the Marlboro varsity volleyball team. This year, she was named First Team All-Shore and First Team All-Group Four. And she is undecided on where she is going to play volleyball. Hopefully, she finds out tomorrow. And the last person I'd like to recognize is our Viva Gymnast at Marlboro, her name is Melissa Astorita. She's unfortunately unable to be here tonight, but I'd like to say a few words about her. Melissa received the Burke House Outstanding Young Athlete of the Year Award at their annual awards dinner. The Burke House is a nonprofit organization based in Staten Island and funded by Tommy Whelan, a Vietnam War veteran. The organization supports various schools for children in Vietnam. This school year, they'll be dedicating funds for a school in Vietnam for the blind, and it'll be in Melissa's name. So, that's number one. Her accomplishments this season, she was in the Central Sectional Tournament. She was our balance game champion. In the state tournament, she was the vault champion. She was the Star Ledger Gymnast of the Week. She was the Star Ledger Sectional Gymnast of the Year. She was nominated First Team All-State, and she was the Coaches' Selection for First Team All-State. She also broke every record at Marlboro this year, which she actually set last year. She's a sophomore, and she's already verbally committed to Penn State, a top-five gymnastics school in the country. So, I'd like to... We'd now like to call up administrators from the Manalton High School.
Hi, good evening. I'm Adamian Helozia, I'm the Principal of Manalton High School. I would first like to thank the Board of Education and the Central Office Administration for honoring our school and our students this evening. Additionally, I would like to congratulate all of the other district medal recipients here tonight. To begin, I will start with the National Merit Commended Students. Starting off, I have Abiman Yuchaudri, Thomas Colen, Michael Tonover, Lucas Eisenberg, Krishna Gotur. Krishna also got a perfect twenty-four hundred on his SAT. But you did that last year, so you might have already pulled him up for that one, Maris. John Fitch, Thomas Marshall, Ayush Nital, who just recently got accepted and will be attending Cornell University. Kaylee O'Donnell, Vivek Rajan, Michael Rosenberg, Harish Sabravna Kumar. I practiced that four times. And Tyler Stafflinger, and Homor An, and Alexander Ye. Additionally, I'm going to ask Rishi Bonisani to come down. He's also a National Merit Commended Student. And Rishi, this past summer, attended the Fukushima High School World Summit. There were two students selected from about twenty different countries to Japan. They were greeted there by the First Lady and the Prime Minister, and they engaged in a symposium centered on the future of nuclear energy in Japan. Last summer, Rishi went to the Tomodachi Summit, also in Japan. Every summer, he seems to get an all-expenses-fee trip to Japan. So, I try to figure out what he's doing, because it's worth it for him. So, congratulations for National Merit Commended Students. Now for our National Merit semifinalists, Jerome Binatwala, Eric Fang. Eric also just got accepted to Cornell University. And Lucy Lee. Hey, Eric, that's it on our semifinalists. And is Kurt Chen with us this evening? Kurt? We had a junior who just recently took the SATs and also scored a twenty-four hundred. I will now turn over to Mr. Ryan.
Good evening. My name is John Hine, I'm the Supervisor of Extracurricular Activities at Manalton High School. I'd like to congratulate everyone being honored here tonight. At Manalton High School, we'll be honoring three athletes for their exceptional achievement on the field and in the classroom, this basketball, beginning with Ariana Ferraro. Ariana is a four-year varsity star for our girls soccer team. As a senior captain this year, she played forward, scoring an impressive twenty-one goals with fifteen assists. She's described by her coach as "one of the most dangerous and highly skilled players in the state", "someone with incredible foot skills and great field vision". In addition to being named the A-North Player of the Year, she was also recently awarded First Team All-Shore honors by the Asbury Park Press. Ariana will be attending the University of Louisville next year on a full scholarship. Our next recipient is also a soccer player, Michael McNicholas. Michael has been a standout defensive center fullback throughout his athletic career at Manalton High School, and was named as a captain both his junior and senior years. Very unusual. Twice previously recognized as a First Team All-Shore recipient, Michael's outstanding play on the field more recently earns him the John Cobb Senior Excellence Award from Monmouth County. This award is given to one male and one female player in Monmouth County each year by the Shore Soccer Association in recognition of athletic and academic excellence and leadership both on and off the field. His soccer play aside, Michael has also done exceptionally well in the classroom, ranking number two in his class. Currently, Michael's considering offers from Rochester Institute of Technology, Runcle Polytechnic Institute, and Johns Hopkins. And last but not least, Riley Redosovich, please step forward. Riley was a two-year starter for our football team as a tight end and defensive end, and was an integral part of last year's state championship team. Over the course of this season, as a senior captain, Riley was a force to be reckoned with on the field, recording sixty tackles, sixteen for loss of yardage, and six sacks. He was named First Team A-North, First Team by the Shore Sports Network and Shore Sport Zone, First Team All-Shore. Additionally, Riley was one of fifty-one football players in New Jersey to be recognized as a Mini-Max Award winner, which was described earlier. Similar to our other recipients tonight, Riley has also done extraordinarily well in the classroom. He currently has a GPA of four point two, and his mauling offers from Princeton, Cornell, and IQ Yale as well. Congratulations. Yeah, congratulations to all the recipients today. I believe Howell...
Good evening. My name is Michelle England. I'm the Assistant Principal at Howell High School, and this is Mr. Pete Mehan. He is the Supervisor of Extracurricular Activities. I'm extremely excited to be here this evening to honor the students of Howell High School for all of their outstanding fall accomplishments. Before we begin, and along with our principal, Mr. Rotherman, and our entire administrative team, we would like to thank the Board of Education, our Superintendent, Central Administration, and the parents of our students for their continued support. We would also like to extend congratulations to all the students throughout the district for receiving medals this evening. At this time, we would like to recognize the outstanding achievement of the two Howell High School seniors that have earned the distinct honor of being named National Merit Commended Scholars. These two special young ladies should be applauded for the effort and dedication they have demonstrated throughout their high school careers. Please join me in congratulating Johanna Connolly and Kaylee Wilson. Now, Mr. Mehan will introduce our remaining winners.
Good evening. I'm Mr. Mehan, Supervisor of Extracurricular Activities at Howell High School. I have a whole bunch of folks I need to bring up here this evening. First, I'm going to ask Mr. Napolitano to please help me out here. We have thirteen students who were involved with the All-American High School Film Festival. They ended up winning this competition. They went into New York City. Over a course of two days, they were given an assignment, and they come up with what they wanted to do, put it together, and then go through and edit, and then show the entire movie that they created in a all-matter-of-two-days. This was a national event. It was the first ever. And our thirteen people here today were the winners of that competition. I'm going to have Mr. Napolitano introduce you.
Our next team is Stan, come on down here. Bernie Torres, Max Ramon, Zach Miller, Christopher Montesmet, and Alex Salvador, Alia Hanawal, Elizabeth Colomba, Caleb Trinzo, Brooke Leslie, Courtney Sterns, Amy Denora, Alia Winek, and Griffin Bowie. So, we have all time.
At this time, I would like to call up Mrs. Regina McGowan. She yours? Mrs. McGowan works for our chorus, and they are quite the all-shore chorus squad. She's going to introduce you to all of them. Several of them were also nominated to the National Chorus. And there's a couple of other awards in there. She's going to introduce all of these nice young men and women here. Thank you. This is Regina McGowan.
Thank you so much. Lots going on at Howell, so much to tell on. The first one is All-National Chorus. We had six students, Vincent DiSeno, Lindsay Charon, David Sherman, Michael Olson, Katie Langin, and Leah Sandow travel to Nashville, Tennessee this October. Out of the entire country, six is the highest number of any high school in the United States. So, we're really proud of that. We sent the grand old rocket on that journey. They were announced at an opera competition last month as well, and it's called the Rising Stars High School Classical Competition. And they choose six singers in the state of New Jersey to perform, and three of those out of the six were from Howell: Alexa Chalik, Lindsay Charon, and Dylan DeRobio. And finally, at the recent All-Shore Chorus Auditions, out of all the high schools in Monmouth and Ocean County, Howell High School had twenty-four students accepted into the group, which I believe is our number. We're very proud of that. The recipients are Emily Boyle, Lauren Carter, Lindsay Charon, Kaylin Filardo, Sophia Lukinov, Brianna Stout, Samantha Gallop, Olivia Hanawalt, Michaela Long, Alyssa Winek, Griffin Eagle, Michael Olson, David Sherman, Alexa Chalik, Alex Cusomato, Abhi Chu, Katie Langin, Leah Sandow, Leana Santana, Vincent DiSeno, Matt Donzella, Mike Friedman, Brandon Mudaway, and Josh Ricklin. Thank you so much.
Coach McBain, would you please join me here at the podium? Coach McBain, we're a very competitive team. We've got an issue team. A great young lady we have on our squad. Let me hand you to announce her name. Thank you, Coach McBain.
I'd like to introduce Neve Hayes for Crest Country. Neve, welcome. Scott, Rosie, Group Two, Shore Track Association Junior of the Year. She was All-Shore Conference and All-Monmouth County. Congratulations, Neve.
Thank you, Coach McBain. I wanted to introduce you guys to Monica's video. I do not think Monica's here this evening. If Coach told me, she wouldn't be making it. Monica is one of our gymnasts. She was named First Team All-Shore. I'll be taking a medal for her. At this time, I'd like to call up Coach Benor to introduce one of our soccer players. Thank you, Coach Benor.
I'd like to announce Rebecca Hamilton for being the First Team All-Shore for girls soccer. She's a two-time captain, four-year starter for me, and she will be attending Penn State in the fall.
Congratulations, Rebecca. At this time, I'd like to call Michael Riley to the podium. Michael Riley is one of our football players. He's a captain on the team. He was also one of the fifty-one candidates that was selected for the Mini-Max Award. I believe the regional district had four of those selections this year. He's outstanding. He's outstanding. Michael, nice job. That'll be a big clue for Howell. Good luck. Enjoy the holidays.
Thank you, Mr. Mehan. We have two of our Coltsnet representatives. I promise you, those of you who are here, it'll be worth the wait. Congratulations to all recipients at all schools, all fellow administrators. Let me again thank the Board of Education, Mr. Sampson, Central Administration. On behalf of Mr. Donahue, Mrs. Kozar, and all of Coltsnet High School, we appreciate the opportunity to host tonight's meeting and to be able to present some of our students for recognition as well. I have seven students that we would like to recognize for their selection as National Merit Commended Scholars. Swafi Gayen, Christopher Greco, Jessica Greenberg, Sydney Howard, Josh Corr, Mia Feshwaha, If you check my Twitter feed, you'll see a great picture of them, but they got it out in front by the memorial garden. Congratulations, guys. Way to go. Head that way. Mr. Sampson's going to give you a medal. Oh, photo ops, still photo, sorry. Can never get enough of those. And they're all here to eleven, seven for seven. I'd like to call Sarah Bond to the podium, please, Sarah. Sarah is Coltsnet High School's Gold Award recipient, and I'd like to just describe Sarah's project. Sarah created Winnie the Pooh characters out of plywood to be placed in an outdoor reading area for the kids that attend summer camp at Kateri Nature Center. Sarah led a group of twenty people to help accomplish this. It required creating space in a wooded area, getting donations from local businesses to help with materials. Sarah also collected books for the center for the kids to read. Congratulations, Sarah. John, well done. A quick side note, I'd also like to thank Sarah's mom for all the information she provided to myself and all my colleagues with regards to the gold awards to make sure that the girls got the recognition that they deserved. Next award's a little near and dear to my heart, so I'd like to call Zach Sipke up to the podium, please. Zach, come on up. Zach is Coltsnet High School's Eagle Scout recipient, near and dear to me as he joins the brotherhood that I belong to, one of, and I say this every time, but it bears repeating, one of five brothers that are Eagle Scouts, two boys that are Eagle Scouts, two that are on their way to Eagle, and in a family of twenty-six grandchildren and my father's side of the family, we are seven for seven with Eagle Scouts with the grandkids so far. So this is a very significant award, distinctly shared before all of the requirements. For Zach's project, he built two large flower planters for the Howell Township Emergency Food Pantry. To accomplish this, Zach organized a crew to help him in this project. They built planters from wood filled with soil and plants. The planters were then stained, topped with soil, and now sit at the front of the pantry. Congratulations, Zach. John, well done. I will now turn the rest of the presentations over to our Supervisor of Extracurricular Activities, Mr. Arnejo, who's going to be here for a while.
Thank you, Mr. Simon. My name is Rick Arnejo. I'm the Supervisor of Extracurricular Activities here at Coltsnet High School. Much like real township, we also had three state sectional champions, and our soccer team won the overall group as well. So I'd like to call up initially the first group we would like to recognize, Coltsnet High School, is the Girls Cross Country Team. To introduce the recipients of the district medals for this group, the Central Jersey Group Three Champions is Coach Jim Schlens. Coach Schlens has been a MJSIA member for his contributions to track and, or cross-country, I should say, by winning the track award by the MJSIA. So Coach Schlens.
Thank you. First group of athletes are the Girls Cross Country Team. I'm going to call you up. Start coming up as they call you, okay? Kaylee Hogan in Oakland, for the United States of California. Liz Mitchell Horr, Colleen Megley, Eva Gibson, Eva Gibson, sorry, Corinne O'Neil, Dominique Massia. Kaylee Hogan was named by the Shore Coaches Association to the All-Shore Team. All right, one more picture there. Two. All right.
Coach Schlens is not going far because our second group of athletes is the Coltsnet Boys Cross Country Team, who also won the state sectional title. Coach Schlens?
All right, the Boys Cross Country Team was also second in the state championship, Group Three, and ninth in the championship. Jordan Brannan, Anthony Russo, Zach Sipke, Rick Summer, come on up for us. Liam Hogan, Alex Megley, Kevin Daly, Jonathan Todd, and Alberto Vargas. Jordan Brannan is not here, but he was First Team All-Shore, First Team All-State, Group Three, and he was Second Team All-State for all groups. Pictures, while the pictures are going up, tell you that Anthony Russo was Second Team All-State, Group Three, and Zach was Third Team All-State, Group Three. All right. Thank you very much.
The phrase "save the best for last" I think is most appropriate. The third group of athletes we'd like to recognize is the Coltsnet High School Girls' Soccer Team. The recipients of the district medals for the Girls Soccer Team was supposed to be two-time short conference coach in your Doug Phillips. He is under the weather. We do have Kate Foger, Assistant Coach, and Heather Weston, our other Assistant Coach.
All right, girls, come up. Jenna Buckley, Karik Marco, Noel Caporti, Eva Cutler, Lauren Feaster, Isabella FitzHenry, Kristen Gammadella, Bridget King, Morgan Christman, Ali Largie, Kayla Lee, Nicole Lowly, Emma Martin, Kristy Mekula, Isabella Pecarrero, Allison Russo, Ally Ryan, Sedona Somares, Frankie Tagliafari, Amanda Visco, and Tara Welenka.
This team has quite a resume, one that arguably makes them the best team ever in Coltsnet High School history. They had a list of goals at the start of the year, and I would say they accomplished all of them. B-North Division Champions, Short Conference Tournament Champions, Central Jersey Group Three Champions, and they defeated the number-one ranked team in the country, that's the country, Northern Highlands, to win the overall Group Three Championship. They finished the season undefeated with twenty-four wins, zero losses, and one tie. They finished the season ranked number one in the Star Ledger. They were ranked number one by MSG Tri-State Power Rankings, that includes New York, New Jersey, and Connecticut. They were ranked number five nationally by TopDrawSoccer.com, and they were ranked number six nationally by the USA Today. As a former coach and a current CBA, I can tell you this team is filled with athletes that you want on your team. They are tough, determined, talented, clearly, and unwilling to accept less than a hundred percent from themselves. They are quite simply special. I want to thank you on behalf of the administration and the fans and the students for taking us along for the ride that you guys brought us on. As you might expect, several players on the team received individual honors as well. I will call those up that have received First Team honors, but there were seventeen members that did receive Second and Third Team honors. Bridget King, is Bridget or Bridget not here? Bridget King's not here. She was First Team All-Shore. She was MSG, that's the Asbury Park Press, MSG Varsity, Second Team All-State, All-Groups. Star Ledger, Third Team All-State, All-Groups. She will be attending the University of Vermont to continue her soccer career. Amanda Visco, First Team All-Shore. MSG Varsity, First Team All-State, All-Groups. Star Ledger, First Team All-State, All-Groups. She was named to the High School All-America Team and in the game, played on December 5th. It was a zero-zero tie, and wouldn't you know it, Amanda was named, it was East versus West, the East MVP in a scoreless tie. She will be going to Rutgers University to continue her soccer career. Frankie Tagliafari. Frankie was First Team All-Shore. MSG Varsity, First Team All-State, All-Groups. Star Ledger, First Team All-State, All-Groups. The Star Ledger Player of the Year for New Jersey. The MSG Varsity, New Jersey State Player of the Year. Frankie has also been considered for the USA Today Gatorade Player of the Year. We'll find out hopefully soon. She will be attending Ole Miss Junior. She'll be attending Penn State in a couple of years to continue her soccer career. Congratulations to the 2015 Girls, Coltsnet Girls Soccer Team. That began the district medals for Coltsnet High School. Again, congratulations to all of district medal recipients.
Thank you, Mr. Arnejo. We will take a two-minute recess and resume with more business. Those of you who would like to stay, you're more than welcome to ask questions. The full audit has been debriefed with the Finance Committee, the Board of Education. Mr. Boyce will certainly make a few remarks afterwards. As in, this is my fifth year here, the fifth audit report, and I'd just like to compliment Mr. Boyce, Ms. Smith, and the Business Office. You know, we've had incredibly clean audits over that time. We are a very large organization with an approximately $200 million budget, and managing the financial house is certainly a complex endeavor that our Business Office has always done extraordinarily well. So I'd like to call up representatives from Suffolk, including our auditors, to go over the annual audit report.
Good evening, everybody. My name is John Swisher, and I'm with Suffolk, including and Company. We recently completed the audit for the fiscal year heading June 30th, 2015, for the Phil Regional High School District. The results for our audit are contained in two reports. There's a large report that's called the CAFR, the Comprehensive Annual Financial Report, that has all the numbers in it, and then there's a small report that's called the Auditor's Management Report. And in that report, the state of New Jersey asked us to report on certain areas of compliance, be it purchasing, be it payroll, student activities, et cetera. I'm going to start with the small report because that's the report that if we do have any findings, I'm going to put them into this report. There is one finding that we have this year, which I'm going to read into the record as And the recommendation reads that the student activities accounts expenditures be restricted payments for student group activities, and that proper supporting documentation be provided for all such expenditures. The student activities are the accounts where you'll find the yearbook account, the class of 2015 account, the chess club, et cetera. There are some activities that are taking place in there that are not incorrect or wrong, they're just not properly placed in the financial statements. Those activities have been discussed with the administration, and we move to other sections of the report where they're more properly reported. The larger report, the CAFR, contains our opinion on the financial statements. That's the most important document, that entire booklet, it's a rather large booklet, as you can say. The opinion is where we say whether or not we think that the financial statements are free or materialistic. Best opinion that you can get on your financial statements is an unmodified opinion, and again, this year, the district has achieved an unmodified opinion. And basically, what that means is they're able to put together financial statements that we can audit, and that, as I said, are free of materialistic. I should also note at this point that the Phil Regional High School District is our only district out of thirty that our firm does that prepares the CAFR themselves, pretty much from soup to nuts. They put the CAFR together, and they give it to us to audit. Many of our other districts, we actually have to assist them in putting the CAFR together. Here at the Regional, you guys do it yourself, which is the way that it should be. So that's excellent. The other important thing that everyone wants to know about at the end of the year is where we stand financially. And I'm going to go very quickly over a quick analysis of the fund balance at the end of the year that the district has. They began the year with about $36 million in surplus, and they're ending the year slightly lower, but they're still in excellent financial condition. That $35 million is broken out into various components, and I'll touch on a couple of that I think are very important. The capital reserve, okay, the capital reserve is money where the district can put money away to take care of capital projects. And each year, they try and put a little bit into that reserves that can take care of the various things that a district of this size needs to take care of in terms of their plan. They have, at the end of the year, over $6 million of capital reserve money, of which $1.8 million is being used in this year's budget. It's just real good planning to have money in your capital reserve because as things come up, okay, you have money aside that you can use for these capital projects. The state of New Jersey sometimes comes up with money for grants that they're looking for matching portion on. If you have money in your capital reserve, you can take advantage of that money to its fullest extent. Also, at the end of the year, we have excess surplus, which is what the state of New Jersey terms as anything over two percent of your operating expenditures. That's kind of a very vague thing. The state came up with a long time ago, says to take a mark, two percent, and say anything over that would be considered excess surplus. Okay, we do have excess surplus this year, and it's about $9.9 million, which has to be used as tax relief two years hence. It's down about $2 million from the year before. So that money will be used at a minimum to reduce taxes in the fiscal year '17. We also have unassigned surplus at the end of the year of about $4.5 million, which represents the two percent cap that the state tells us that they're supposed to have. But overall, the district is in excellent financial condition. The records are in great shape as well, and I'd be more than happy to take any kind of comments or questions from the audience. Hearing them, the words.
Thank you, John. You know, we've been able to work with Suffolk, including for a few years now, and they do an excellent job with the engagements of the annual audit, but they're also a resource for us all year long. So they offer us insight. When you have thirty different school district clients, you get to see a lot of different things, and to bring that additional value to the engagement is something that I appreciate, John, so I want to thank you there. Financial health overall, the annual audit is a look back. It's a piece of history. It's the year just closed, and that needs to be filed with appropriate financial houses, and that's certainly going to be done. The other component of that is the annual budget, which we're in the process of, and into the new year, we'll be talking with the board and the community about that as well. So it's really a look forward, look back, both are important pieces. John did mention something, and I just wanted to highlight it, that we've been able to put together a really strong group in our business office in recent years, and, you know, I wanted to note the work of that group, and in particular, our Administrator of Finance, Trish Smith. Trish joined us a little more than a year ago. You may have heard John mention that of the thirty clients, only one hands the annual financial statements off, and that is from start to finish, Mrs. Smith's work. She runs point on this audit and a lot of day-to-day operation of the business office as well, so we appreciate her good work very much as well. And if there are no questions tonight, that's fine. Feel free to reach out at any time, and... Feel free to reach out at any time, and we'll be happy to answer those questions as they come. Thank you, Mr. Boyce. Thank you, Mr. Swisher. So we now have our annual testing report. It's a little bit complicated this year, as folks know that this was the first year where we had our PARC assessments throughout the district. It's the first year that the data has counted, that we have actual test scores. We did just receive those test scores within the past few weeks. And we've really tried very, very diligently to understand what some of those scores might be able to tell us. And what we're finding is that we think we probably need another year before we can make any generalizations from the testing data itself. We did see a strong correlation between grades earned and scores on the PARC assessments, but as Dr. Moore noted, that could be good or bad, so we're not quite certain. For those of you who've been following the news, the Every Student Succeeds Act has now supplanted No Child Left Behind. There may be some significant implications for that, as the federal requirement for testing has now been reduced somewhat, and at the high school level, that requirement is one test, and remember, this is a minimum, but is one test over the course of the high school duration, that may be broken up into multiple components. So what those potential implications are for the PARC assessment, again, we're uncertain. We did take a look at the data preliminarily, and then Dr. Hazel and Dr. Moore will go through just sort of the way in which the scores are laid out. In our district, we had very high refusal numbers in some buildings, and so often, in some of the grade levels where students were tested, we had anywhere from 40% to 50% of the students not take the PARC assessment. We're trying to make sense, we're trying to learn as much from who didn't take those assessments, and what buildings, and what that looks like in terms of drawing any conclusions from the data at this point in time. But unlike previous years where we could sort of give definitive HESPA numbers and the public could really understand what those meant in terms of proficiency in relation to graduation, you know, this is sort of uncharted waters. One issue that we are addressing as a school district is there are a number of senior students, to date, exactly 108 to be exact, who have not yet either taken a proficiency assessment that the state has designated as being acceptable for graduation in Blue Park, or have not passed one of those assessments to the acceptable threshold and cutoff as established by the state. That is an inordinate amount of work for the organization to try and make sure that we are, A, constantly communicating with those students, reaching out to the parents, running programs after school for those students, providing opportunities to take specific assessments that the state has signed off as meeting graduation requirements. The next step, if a student does not, and we have an administration of a test upcoming, so we expect that number to come down somewhat, but the next step prior to the end of the school year would be a portfolio process as established by the state. That's an awful lot of work for certainly the school system and the folks therein, so we will certainly keep the Board of Education and members of the public abreast as to how we are handling that situation. And now, just as a cursory overview of what these initial PARC results have looked like, I'll call Dr. Hazel and Dr. Moore to the podium.
As Mr. Sampson said, Dr. Moore, our Director of Curriculum and Instruction, and myself, will be giving a brief overview of the Year One PARC results. For the sake of the camera, my name is Nicole Hazel. Dr. Hazel, I'm the Chief Academic Officer of the Freehold Regional High School District. Tonight's presentation on student achievement is just the beginning of a new chapter on state assessment. As we all know, the acronym of PARC has replaced HESPA. Yesterday's academic standards have been replaced with a set of more demanding academic standards. Today's vision of the high school graduates are students who possess depths of knowledge and refined skills set up to challenge tackling complex and challenging issues. To enable all of our students to demonstrate growth and mastery of learning standards, our district has done quite a few things. We have aligned academic expectations with those of colleges and employers. We have implemented tiered academic support systems for general and special education students, as Mr. Sampson alluded to. We have promoted classroom environments where students collaborate and develop solutions to hypothetical and real-world problems. We, as a district, have established interim assessments that measure students' progress and growth over time throughout their courses. We utilize data here as an instructional tool. In our buildings, our teachers provide meaningful and timely feedback to students and parents. We encourage community partnerships to extend learning beyond the classroom, and we have committed to integrating classroom technology to spur innovation and continuous improvement. So like we said, PARC assessments have replaced New Jersey ASPE and HESPA in the areas of language arts and mathematics. Students began taking these PARC assessments in third grade as required by federal law. As a result of the waiver won by the New Jersey Department of Ed, students taking advanced coursework in middle school did not have to take two math tests. Instead, they took the assessment that was most closely aligned with their coursework. For example, a student who was taking Algebra I as a course was permitted to take the Algebra I test and didn't sit for the standard eighth-grade PARC math test. You'll see on the next slide, when the students receive their individual score reports, it's divided into five performance levels per PARC. And students receive descriptions within each of the areas of content for language arts and mathematics. So looking at a Level 1, it's a student who has not yet met grade-level expectations. Receiving a 2 would be partially meeting grade-level expectations. Receiving a 3 would be approaching grade-level expectations. A 4, meeting grade-level expectations. And a Level 5 would be a student who is exceeding grade-level expectations. And Dr. Moore will go into the individual district results in language arts and mathematics, and how we fared with this performance level group record. It's important to recognize, however, that while PARC is an assessment of student learning that does provide useful information about a student, New Jersey has been and remains committed to using multiple metrics in assessing student progress and attainment. Decisions about student placement in the next grade, grade level, or course have always been made by the local school district, and should always be informed by multiple sources of information, including recommendations, as well as parent input. As you listen further to the specific testing data that will be presented by Dr. Moore, please keep in mind that the primary goal of New Jersey's statewide assessment program is to provide an academic checkup to ensure that students are meeting expectations. These assessment results, as well as all of our local assessments that we use here at the Freehold Regional High School District, help our principals, supervisors, and classroom teachers, as well as parents, identify students who need extra support, and helps the district identify any achievement gaps so that we can implement strategies and allocate our resources appropriately. Finally, these results will help our district measure the effectiveness of our curriculum, academic interventions, and support programs over time. It is now my pleasure to turn the remainder of the presentation to our district's Director of Curriculum and Instruction, Dr. Jeffrey Moore.
Thank you. So Mr. Sampson mentions the timeline by which we receive these scores, and just to reiterate that very quickly, because it underscores some of the work and the timeline around our work with these scores. We originally received in mid-November overview data in PDF form. It was the end of the month, in fact, it was a couple of days just before Thanksgiving that we received the spreadsheet with all of the PARC data. And so that's what we've been slicing and dicing since, in the past couple of weeks, is that large body of data in the spreadsheet. Now, I'm going to put in the next couple of slides a lot of numbers up on the screen, so I'll walk you through it very quickly, but I just want to point out at this stage that everything on the charts that I'm about to show you is key to those levels. So 1 being the lowest level of performance on PARC, and 5 being the highest level. PARC has a baseline this year. First year of these data, Mr. Sampson mentioned, it'll take several years, maybe more, before we have a full understanding of what all of these scores mean. What we can do right now is compare scores both within PARC, so different levels of PARC, different regions, where we can compare them to other measures that we have. So that's where we are at this point. So what we have on this first slide are the English performance rates for 9th, 10th, and 11th grade of last year. 12th graders did not take PARC, in English Language Arts, last year. And what you can see, you can see my red dot, is the number of valid scores on the 9th grade, 10th grade, and 11th grade PARC, both throughout the entire PARC region across the country, in New Jersey and in the regional. Mr. Sampson mentioned refusal rates in the 40% to 47% range in certain schools. In English Language Arts, the overall refusal rate was in the neighborhood of about 37%, 38% of our students across all six of our high schools. Level 1, percentage rates, 2, 3, and 4 and 5 are listed in green, all up and down English Language Arts, because those are the two levels that New Jersey counts toward the graduation requirement. Students have to achieve Level 4 or 5 to use PARC as fulfilling their graduation requirement for testing in English Language Arts. So what we note here is that New Jersey does better than the rest of PARC, and that Freehold Regional generally does better than the rest of the state. And you can see bottom, what we're looking at, 41% on the very bottom there for the 11th graders as well. So like I mentioned earlier, all we have at this point to compare PARC to is, in this case, itself in other populations. So we're seeing here comparisons to other larger regions. Now, math is on the next slide, and math is a little bit more complicated. One of the things that makes English Language Arts a little bit easier to begin to look at is that all students in 9th, 10th, and 11th grade take the PARC in English Language Arts. All 9th graders took the same battery of questions. As you get into math, it gets a little bit different, because we have three subject area rather than grade-level tests. So we have Algebra I, Geometry, and Algebra II. And a fact to remember as we go into those numbers is that a large number of our accelerated math students are taking Algebra I and Geometry before they even get to us. They don't PARC with us in Algebra I and Algebra II. Our freshmen who start in Algebra I are those students who have not necessarily been accelerated by their middle schools that are taking Algebra I with us. And that shows in the data. So if you look at Algebra I, Geometry, and Algebra II, you can see a steep drop-off there. 31% for PARC, 36% for New Jersey. And then Freehold Regional's proficiency rate is when we look at the combination of 4 and 5, 19%. And again, a lot of our students taking Algebra, or a lot of our students in math have already taken Algebra I in 8th grade, so they didn't take PARC with us. And that's one of the first things that we note in those data, is that our most accelerated math students are not represented in this testing population. In Geometry, we see something of the same situation, where our most accelerated math students have completed Geometry in 8th grade, so they did not take PARC with us, so their scores aren't reflected in our population. And you can't quite see it on the bottom here, but what we have with Algebra II, Algebra II is the only math PARC that all of our students taking Algebra II. 8th graders are not taking Algebra II. If they're taking PARC, they're taking it in Algebra II with us. And the number at the bottom, which you can't see there, at least I can, is 52%. So when we see all of our students in the mix, we jump well above the state average. When you take students out of the mix, because they've taken those courses in 8th grade, we're seeing some dips. Now, one thing to note here, notice that we have three proficiency levels in green on Geometry and Algebra II. The state has broadened the graduation fulfillment window there to not just be 4 and 5, but students who get a 3, 4, or 5 in Geometry or Algebra II are considered to fulfill their graduation requirements. So it's a bit wider of a window for them. One thing to mention is, as we PARC here, is just reflections guiding our analysis moving forward. We're planning the next Curriculum Committee meeting, which is in January, to present a much larger body of data, all sliced and diced with a bunch of findings that we're already starting to piece together, but which will have in much stronger shape than. The three things that we're looking at most closely are the patterns and impacts of refusal rates throughout our region. So what impact did that have on our scores? The fact that in English Language Arts, 37%, 38% of our students refused that test. So what does that mean? Who were those students, and what impact might that have had? Our initial findings there are a little inconclusive, but we are starting to see some things that might have impacted the scores, particularly some socioeconomic trends that might have impacted our scores. Correlations to other measurements, Mr. Sampson mentioned that we've compared PARC grades to final grades, and we've seen high correlations there. We've also compared PARC scores to other achievement tests like ACT Aspire and our own diagnostic assessments, and we've seen some high correlations there as well. So students who took the PARC did basically what they do on other assessments and other tasks that we put before them, which gives us some hope that there might be something to learn in these data, students didn't check out of the test. Specific deficiencies, though, we're diving into the data to see what we can learn about specific deficiencies in our population against the Common Core state standards in English and math, particularly in English. The data in English are a bit better in terms of finding specific deficiencies. The data in math are a bit too broad for us at this point. We're hoping down the road that the math PARC data become a little more granular, so we can get in there and see specific deficiencies. English Language Arts is much easier to pull those out. So in January, when the committee meets, we will have a lot of data on all three of these questions, all three of these reflection points, and the analysis of these data, however, is going to be ongoing for quite some time, not just throughout the spring, but probably into next year as well. Thank you.
Any questions from board members, as to where we are right now with PARC?
Should I come up there?
I do.
Oh, okay. I think I would have been talking about this tonight, so I think we'll give the report I got at home. But for both math and English, when they told you what your score was, whether you met expectations, there were like different subsegments of English you met, right? It was like, was it six on a piece of paper that you met, or whether you met, right?
Yeah, there, so in PARC, there are these things called subclaims, which are those finer points of data that are diving into specific areas in each subject.
And then, so let's say you met five or six. You also got like a total grade, and you met expectations, and that's what they go by where they're...
Yeah, so graduation's based on that total, if that's what you mean, yeah.
I'll bring it to the tree.
Yeah, we're going to talk a lot about this in committee, but there are subsets within the whole of the overall... within the whole of the, the overall score. You know, the interesting thing about PARC is that on the, on that one to five gradation, which is the, the scoring, it's up to individual states to determine what is passing. So, you know, even though they've developed a common assessment, and I think PARC is at this point in time includes seven or eight states, including DC, it changes, yes, it changes frequently. And so one of the, one of the initial indications was that you'd have assessment across the nation that would sort of put everybody, give an accurate gauge of where every student is in relation to our troops. We can certainly still do that, need a score, however, the individual states determining their own cutoffs for what is passing. You know, we've, we've raised the question, when you look at that scale of one to five, and if a student goes through Algebra I, for instance, and has C pluses in the class perhaps, scores a three on, on the PARC assessment, you know, the school system would certainly move that student on to geometry. And, and whether or not that's not actually passing, we're not being college appropriate, we'll see how that all plays out. The state did already extend this one additional year, so you know, these, it's now, you have sort of the alternative pathway until 2020 at this point in time. I, you know, I expect that there, that ESSA may have an impact upon what happens to PARC ultimately. The, the test itself, there was from last year to this year, a slight reduction in total testing time in the English Language Arts section, so they did draw that timeline task down a bit. Where we head from, from here, though, is, is going to be interesting. And we can come back up to the table and conduct formal business. Thank you, Dr. Moore, thank you, Dr. Hazel. to just make sure that we address this, this evening. We, we had our middle states accreditation visit, our systems accreditation visit between December first and December fourth, and, and folks have heard me talk about this, so the, the system-wide accreditation was a way of building a bridge to our next strategic plan. Over the course of those three days, I believe we had fourteen visiting team members who were all educational professionals embedded throughout our six high schools and meeting with central office staff. And what, what, what it is, it's a validation team visit. So we put together a real elaborate self-study with particular objectives to achieve over a seven-year time period, and then the external team comes in and validates if what we said was true is, is accurate. And I think it's important for the board and the public to hear that the preliminary report was for full systems accreditation for seven years, but that many, many members of the, the visiting team who have been, were all veteran members, had all been on multiple site visits, some of them have been doing this for twenty-plus years. There were a significant number of those visiting team members that literally said it was the best school district that they had ever visited in terms of our planning ethos and our attentions to detail. And they actually also commented that their template needs to be ultimately more flexible for districts that demonstrate the severe planning ethic that we have here at Freehold Regional High School. So I thought that was one of the best compliments you can receive is when an external group comes in and they don't, they don't know you and they're just looking across your district and, and when they validate it with statements like that, I think it speaks volumes of the quality of the folks that comprise our school community. And, you know, over the course of the day, they hand out tickets and talk to students randomly and talk to random staff members, so a lot of that is, you know, you can't plan for that. And, and it was an awful lot of work in, in the buildings to get this up and running. Dr. Bleakley from Freehold Township and Mr. Diaz from Freehold Borough did a wonderful job as, as the internal coordinators, and the visit went very, very smoothly. And a, a portion of the final oral report, because we're such a large school community, we actually videotaped that and I know Ms. Morton put together, oh, it's not Ms. Morton anymore. I know Rebecca put together a condensed version of that so that the, the members of the public can see the oral report, which I think was, was powerfully positive for the work that's, that's going on in this school district as a whole. Thank you.
Okay, we have three board reports. First up is Curriculum Instruction Committee.
Okay. November twenty-third, we had a meeting of the Curriculum Committee, and at that point in time, the entrance exams for the learning center and academies had not occurred, so we briefly talked about that. We moved on to PE. I had had some questions about it, so we briefly had a discussion about particular aspects of the curriculum in physical education, which, there's actually an action plan about this in the strategic plan. Thirdly, we talked about unified diagnostics, which replaced the ACT Aspire, which was last year's ninth-grade test, and these are tests used to see where new students are. There were four tests. They're given in September or early October. There were two in English Language Arts, there was Algebra I, and there was geometry. Not very many twelfth graders took the test. None of this counts as a grade for the students and the data gets shared with the regional K through eights, so they can see how their kids are transitioning into the district and where they have to work on certain things. Actually, one of the things we found as a result of this, that inferencing skills really were a particular problem with the tests. And then the administrator showed us how they analyzed the data and what they did about the data. And as I said before, the PARC district uses the data to discuss with each of the sending districts why their students either did well or did poorly. And then to wrap it up, that opportunity index, which basically describes the relationship between a given group's representation in the district population and its representation in our most rigorous programs like AP honors and our magnet program. So basically what they provided us with, pick any of the towns, let's say Farmingdale, we just got analysis of the population of Farmingdale and what percentage of those students are in the learning centers and academies, what percentage are in honors classes, and down the line. And that was that on curriculum.
Okay. Next up, we have finance.
Well, finance, we met last week and all we basically got was the real detailed audit report that we heard a summation of tonight.
Okay. And last but not least, Policy Committee.
Uh, yeah, we met virtually and the reason we did that was that the, you know, we, we updated our policy when the Strauss estimate updates come out. At this point in time, the only update that we had received were, were language changes, specific language changes around TEACH-N-J. And so it was literally language change from things like assigned administrator to, you know, assistant principal and things of that nature. So I sent that out, hard copy, to the board committee members just to take a look at. We didn't, there was no need, we didn't think there was a need to actually meet and discuss any of this because it was all code-driven and we have to adopt it as part of TEACH-N-J. So that was the, the policy committee was done virtually.
Okay. Next up, we have the agenda, which is G1 to K2. Oh, I'm sorry, did I skip that?
I did.
How about participation? We told you nobody signed up. Is there anybody who wanted to speak? There we go. Okay, so we have the agenda, G1 to K2, which will take in one shot. Need a motion? Sam, second?
Second.
Thank you, Jen. Discussion, seeing none. Mr. Voice?
Mr. Asatola?
Yes.
Mr. Rudolph?
Yes.
Mrs. Lada?
Yes.
Mr. Messinger?
Yes.
Mrs. Sutera?
Yes.
Mr. Corolo?
Yes.
Mr. Roses?
Yes, for everything except for sustaining G4, Freehold Township lacrosse. New business, old business, no business. Do we have a motion to agenda?
Before we agenda, just like to wish everybody a happy holiday season and this will be our last time together, so all the best to the folks on the board and the audience.
Well done, Mr. Roses.
Yes.
Happy holidays. Okay, do we have a motion to agenda? Thank you, Jen. Second?
Second.
Thank you, Sam. All those in favor?
Hi.
Thank you. All opposed? So shall you say, so shall it be written. Thank you for coming.